What spot you talking? Oh, you that's your first time there? Impressed.
Yeah, I haven't been.
I haven't. And my daughter, when she was back here for Christmas, she went bought tires there. She lives in Ames and she goes, oh, what a good deal. And she goes, they gave me two free oil changes. When I come back, I'll just get my whole change. Buying tires, so she was thoroughly impressed with them. You know. WW.
That's it.
Kind of. I got a question quick. When we have our executive session about the highway, will we will we take any action? I just thought I'd ask that. Make sure this is off. The Biden. It's nine o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting of the Connington County Commissioners to order December tenth. If you please rise, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Van Dusen would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving down to number two. So call for public comment. If anybody would like to make a public comment, they can do so in person or they can use the telephone numbers. Six oh five eight eight two. Six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cellphone, we'd appreciate if you would silence it. And if you need to take a call, you we'd appreciate if you do it in the hallway. Thank you. Moving down, is there any conflict of interests?
No, no.
Number four, we need a motion to approve December tenth agenda. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, we need a motion to approve the December third. Minutes of the. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now down to number six. In action to approve the it's a federal highway. Adjusted urban boundary map.
Has he joined yet, Lee? Okay, good. Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
Larry. Larry, are you you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you, Chairman. Um, my name's Larry Dean. I'm the Planning Data Manager with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And I get the task every ten years based upon the census to help the class one cities. Um, in the state of South Dakota, there's nineteen of them to redefine their urban boundary based upon the twenty twenty census. This is done every ten years. Um, it's a requirement from the Federal Highway Administration. Um, to determine what area is classified as for federal highway purposes as urban. And what areas is classified as rural as rural. And how this process works is um. After the twenty twenty census, the Census Bureau. Well, take a look at the population densities. And determined by well, in two thousand, in two thousand and ten, they use. Population densities in the block groups, but um if twenty twenty wasn't crazy enough, they decided to use housing units and they decided to use ninety point six one. Housing units per. Population density. Um, so what they do is based upon that calculation is. They will calculate what Census Bureau defines as an urban area. And according to the Federal Highway. Administration's guidelines, I am working in conjunctions with the cities and the counties. In those class one city areas um to determine. What is the best urban boundary? And in addition to the Census Bureau defined urban area. I also look at the annexed landmass that city has and max has has annexed. And any possible growth areas, and I have been working with staff members from. The city of Watertown who gave me recommendations. And on those recommendations. We did do a little bit of modification to this urban boundary based upon their recommendations. Um, this this will also have to go in front of the city council. Of Watertown um for this approval. And there's no funding tied to this at all. Um, basically what it is, it's just determining. What's urban and what's rural for statistical purposes. Um, so basically the Federal Highway Administration can check their little checkbox on there. Um, the biggest step on this whole entire process is once. The county commissioner approves this urban boundary for the city of Watertown. Then I'll work with the city folks and your highway superintendent. To look at the Federal Highway Administration functional classification. And that functional classification is basically is what it illustrates. How the traffic is channelized through the urban and the rural areas. With that, I will. Ask if anybody has any questions.
Larry, I, Mr. Chair, I'd have a question for you, Larry.
Okay.
I think I heard you say that has absolutely no. Effect on zoning as far as um. You know, the city extending its uh uh city limits.
Correct, correct, yeah. It's totally, it's, yeah, you're absolutely correct on that one. This is totally separate than what um the city does annexations. For their incorporated city limits is this is just a federal highway administration requirement to determine what's urban and what's rural. Um, even though we do have it as a part of the urban boundary, the city is no way required to annex that landmass. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Although I would imagine that the city would use it as a crutch or a uh. You know, an ace in the hole, say that is part of the urban district.
Correct.
Therefore, we would want to extend the uh. City boundaries. I I just want to clarify that to make certain that it it is not. And they primarily so the city understands that too.
Correct, that is absolutely correct. And the one, the the actual map that you're illustrating right now is the first version that I did. Um, if you could tell because working with the city staff. We have expanded that boundary down to the south um area. And over by the lake. Um, that has has been updated. And I thought I did send Brendan updated map on that one, so you're not approving this map. Um, there's actually been some modifications to this.
Right, you did mail me a second map. Would you also be able to email me the updated, like the version that you had emailed me before that um?
Absolutely.
Larry, uh, this is Troy. Uh, I have a question about the. Looking at this map that's in front of me here, um, the proposed urban boundary on the south side of Lake Compesca. Where it goes from blue to white there, it looks like out by Sunnyside, just east of one thirty nine.
Okay.
Why is that cut off there? Why does that not extend to one thirty nine?
Where is, okay, could you repeat your question here? I gotta I gotta um make my map bigger so I can see what the street names on there.
Okay, so if you're if you're looking at the map on the south side of Lake Compesca down by one highway one thirty nine. Uh, I guess it'd be over by the state park there on the south side of the lake. You can see where the the blue stops and the white begins there.
Oh, yeah, you yeah, that little that that little area right in there.
Yeah, why wasn't that just taken over to one thirty nine?
Well, you know, that was one of my questions, but there's no population densities in there according to what the Census Bureau calculated.
Right.
Um, and um, let me tell you, I've been doing this for thirty years. And I, you know, the Census Bureau never seeks to amaze me in their infinite wisdom. Um, you know, this year with uh, cause I just got done with the approval with the city of Pier. And I had to get approval from Hughes County, Stanley County, and the city of Fort Pierre on that one because they jumped the river. But there was a housing area east of town. They only included half the housing area. And and yeah, and then out in Sturgis, out to the Fort Meade area, those old barracks that nobody's lived in for sixty years, they included those because they thought people lived in there for population densities, so. I I felt not including that because there was no population in there. Um, but you know, this exercise is gonna hap- happens every ten years when there is a census, so. The next time this is gonna happen again will be the twenty thirty census. And um, it usually takes the Census Bureau a couple of years to compile their data, so the process starts around twenty thirty two. So um, maybe in. The next time it goes around the next person, because I won't be yelling this next time, um, we'll include that piece in there.
I was just curious about what the cutoff was there, why why we see that?
Yeah, because there's no population density. And if you and if you can see the dashed red line on there. Um, that is the current approved one. From urban boundary, uh, approved from Federal Highway Administration in twenty thirteen. And they did the same thing in twenty thirteen.
Okay.
And they did the same thing in two thousand and two on there, so. And usually we like to smooth it out, so there's something out there towards a landmark. And if there wasn't a lake there, um, we definitely would have took it over there to the highway. So does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, so um, if this is not the updated map that we'd be approving to read.
I have the one that Randy will need to sign. It was part of the pack. It's just not part of the packet, but I have the correct map for him to sign to approve.
So.
I I I am going to, if I can email that to you here really quick, Brenda, can email that to you.
You can email it to me if you have my if the one.
Okay, uh, yeah. I will email it to Lee. Uh, just give me one moment here. Sorry about this. Okay. I have, I just wanted to make the, I just wanted to clarify that. I I just sent that to you. I just emailed that to you.
Okay.
You can still send it to me as well. Maybe you CC'd me with Lee.
Okay. I will do the, I will do that here. Just a second here.
It's in transit currently.
Yeah.
Tony Express is ringing.
Tony Express, well, it's it's kind of a colorful map. And while you while you're getting that map, let me let me ask, let me explain a little bit more on this one here. Um, on this map, it's colorful because basically why it's so colorful is. Um, it's kind of hard to see the different colors, but um, you could see the the dark, the yellow stuff in there is what the census defined as their population densities in there, okay? And then I added another boundary and added another layer on top of that to show the city limit boundaries. And then the proposed urban boundary that you guys are approving is underneath of it, but. It'll entail this whole, all these colors on there in addition to the additions that I just sent Lee.
I still don't have it yet, so.
Okay. I apologize for that.
I'll make a motion to to approve in light of waiting for this map, but. I don't have any issues with the amendments that were made to it.
I'll second.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Larry, well, in case it doesn't get here in time, but can you just briefly describe the the differences? Um, between this one and and the one that uh. Where we'd be actually approving.
Okay, I can I can do that um while you're waiting. It's over there on the west side of the lake. We added that piece in there from one seventieth street. Down to the highway, okay? And um, the south. Let me get my map over here and then on the south side and then I apologize, I'm not familiar with. Um, Watertown very well is over by, okay, we added, we extended, there's a piece over there from um, okay, to the east of highway eighty one. From the south section. Over there where that uh, the red portion is. And it goes all the way across, straight across over to. I twenty nine, straight, just just draw a straight and arrow across from that. Uh, what is street is that over on highway eighty one? It says clear as muddy water there. Trying to try to do a visual.
I believe it's Fifth Street in town, isn't it, all the way through?
Yeah. Yeah, and it goes all the way across over there from highway eighty one, just south of Twenty Fifth Avenue Southeast over to Interstate twenty nine. Is the extension on the urban boundary on that south side.
We have a motion and a second.
So that I have a question. So that's south of the bypass twenty there?
Uh, yes.
All the way to the interstate that line is.
Yep, it goes all the way east over to the interstate.
Larry, but that doesn't affect any of the properties that are uh considered as rural at this point, and I did share this with Luke, our zoning officer, and he didn't have any opposition to any of it.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, this was a staff recommendation. From the city folks and with the city of Watertown. Um, this was their recommendation because they're uh they're anticipating some housing areas going in there. Um, within the the between now and the next census in twenty thirty. And it's just, it's just an urban boundary that says, hey, this is where the possible urban growth areas is, is there's no. And there's no requirement whatsoever for the city to annex in there. There's there's gonna be no zoning changes on this. It's just a statistical type thing. That says, all right, so on their webpage, you can go on their webpage, once you guys approve this urban boundary, and I have to calculate all the public road miles within that urban boundary. So statistically, they'll say, hey, there's X amount of miles within. The urban boundary for the city of Watertown, and we have X amount of miles. In the rural areas in Connington County. Does that clarify that a little bit? Yep.
Yeah, I think I I guess I get physically like.
Did you get that yet, Lee?
No, it hasn't come in yet, sorry.
Uh, it's a big file, so I apologize. But Brenda does have the correct map. Um, I don't know if she has that and she could share the correct map with you for the signature map on that. It was a paper map.
I feel comfortable.
Like I said, our next time you'll see me is when we're we're gonna, I'll be asking for any, if we do have any revisions in the functional classifications in the rural areas.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm gonna pass that.
Anybody seen that? Anybody have any other questions for Larry? Seeing no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That that usually the way it works. Well, thank you.
Yes, thanks for helping explain that, Larry.
Okay, have a wonderful day. Bye.
Okay. Now we'll move down to number seven. Need action to approve or request from Jenkins Living Center to serve alcohol to their. Employees for the Christmas party.
And it actually should say sell. I was thinking sir, but Christie um corrected me. It should say sell alcohol for the Jenkins Christmas party.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any other question?
Yeah, where's the Christmas party gonna be held at or what's? At the extension building, okay.
Now, do you have someone to transfer their liquor license?
Yeah, just come up and just uh. State your name and no, it's okay. We're, yeah, come on in and take a chair and turn your mic on.
So you're live and on TV.
Yeah. There you go. You don't have to hold it. It's good.
Yeah, you're good.
Now you're live.
Gotcha. All right, what would you like to know? Cloud nine will have the liquor license and will be serving.
Just go over what, who is it for and how?
Um, it's for the Jenkins Living Center. After Christmas party, January seventeenth, and uh, we will be selling alcohol to any of the attendees and board members that are present, so.
I think the residents should get it.
Well, we do have happy hour once a month. We do. Have to have a doctor's order, though.
They have happy hour callers every day, don't they?
I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, after four.
Don't have a problem. We appreciate you having your party at the extension center.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
So we have a. Motion in a second.
I'll move.
Yep, yes. So wait for Lee. There's no other questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
I'm back again. I'm Christie Glow. I'm the marketing director at Jenkins.
See now, the world knows.
Now the world knows.
Thank you, Christie.
Okay, number eight, uh, action to request to sell alcohol at a wedding event at the.
That's me again, Christie Glow. It's for a uh, Lacher, L A C H E R, uh, Glow, G L O E, wedding on August ninth of twenty five. And Cloud nine will also be providing the alcohol sales and checking IDs or whatever.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
I'll second.
Second by Johnson. Any other questions?
I don't know. Good luck is a. It's the right thing to say, but congratulations, I guess.
Yes, we are very fortunate to have him as our our future son in law. Yeah, it's a very nice young man, so.
Good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
Have a good day.
Moving down to number nine, action to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty five, authorizing an application for the. The big funds for the bridge. Number fifteen dash two forty dash one fifty five.
Morning Lynn.
Morning Lynn.
Turn on your mic there for us. There you go.
So this is for a bridge on County Road seven dash five, which would be four sixtieth avenue. One of the T sections was damaged by ice. So this would be a grant to repair that. Um, we would be responsible for twenty percent. Um, Mark's estimate. If this were to get done for the county share would be thirty to forty four thousand is kind of what he's. Estimating that to be at.
We'd be responsible for twenty percent of that then?
Uh, no, that would be our twenty percent. The total cost, uh, he's got estimated one hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
No, that's exactly where is that bridge at?
On County Road seven five, it's just east of town over here, be four hundred and sixtieth avenue.
That's why it runs north and south.
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah. We just uh. Couple of years ago replaced the decking on that, and then after that, the ice come through and damaged one of the T sections. So this would be a repair.
That someone over that next to the woods. Talked to me about County Road seven over there getting its tough shape from all the gravel trucks.
Yes, it is. Be the same road.
It's the same road. Is it, is the bridge being beat up by the gravel trucks?
Uh, no.
They don't, they don't go over that.
They do, but I mean, the the bridge is only a few years old. It's just this ice came through on the east side and damaged the concrete.
They're just saying the road is getting really bad.
It is, yep, that needs to be addressed in the future.
That's the the bridge over the willow right there.
Yes. And we currently have barrels along the east side of that bridge to keep people off of that edge. Okay, so.
Motion by Gable.
I'll second that.
Second by Johnson. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's go down to number ten, discussion possible action to authorize Chair to sign. Contract for engineering service with Banner Associates for. Storage building improvements. Design.
So this is Adam Hanson with Banner. Um, we have it in the budget next year to. Do some construction on our back portion of the building where we park trucks to turn that into heated storage. And so this would be a contract for Banner to go ahead and start doing the design on that.
Budget, right?
Yes, yes, and that's probably gonna have to be two phases. You know, one phase this next year and one the following year.
Van Dusen would second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van D.
Yeah, that's fine.
Second by Van Dusen.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I don't know.
So this is converting the. Storage into.
Well, it's where we currently park our trucks. This would be to insulate, heat it, pour concrete.
Mr. Chair, we recently uh. Put uh new lighting in that room and it changed the whole appearance of the room. It's it's just a, right now, it's it's a gravel floor in there. And it's uh, it's really, it's not heated. It's just, it's a tough environment.
It's a farm shed.
It's a farm shed, yeah. So when you bring in the trucks after plowing all day, they're coated with ice and everything else, it it's gonna be a a nice uh thing for them to to have a nice place to park.
And with these newer trucks, there's a lot of electrical lines, airlines, and you get that ice and stuff on there. It's, that's where we've had our issues with our trucks is. From from that ice hanging on them lines, so it'd be nice to be able to thaw them off.
And I I know I've been in there, the the structure of the building, everything is fine that we're upgrading. I mean, it's not like we're taking an older building and. Trying to make it better. We're taking a a good standing building and improving it.
The the only thing that's changing structure wise on the building is just the sheeting on the outside. It's got some holes and whatnot from screws and other stuff that's been in there is. Remove and replace the outside sheeting because as soon as we put insulation and interior sheeting on there, you don't really want any penetration on that on that outside membrane, so.
Then you can see how bad the building is, right?
And this contract would be for both phases of that project, so we still gotta figure out exactly what what's gonna go for this year and will go in a a second phase.
Lee, do you want to incorporate that amount into the motion? For the contract?
Yeah, okay.
Is that a hard number, the one oh eight?
Hundred, hundred, yeah. That's not a hard number.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Well, that's a, looks like a super project to do for the.
Needs to be done.
Yeah, scouting for the employees and safety of trucks and all that, you know.
That'll, that'll be nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's uh, long as you're here, Lynn, let's uh. Bump down to number uh. Twelve. Action to approve truck purchase for the highway department.
Okay, so. In next year's budget, it was budgeted for a a truck and a body, a dump body. Um, so I called down to Sioux Falls to the salesman that we've dealt with in the past. And was gonna try and switch that so we get a semi truck. We've. We've currently got two semi trucks. Next year's budget has another belly dump, so we'd be able to pull two belly dumps. Um, but one of our trucks is twenty five years old. And so I was thinking if we could change it and get a semi truck. And I called, asked for the salesman and he says. And I called, asked for the salesman and he says, hey, your new truck's in. Didn't know we had a truck ordered. I said, can we switch that to a semi truck? And he said, no, the way it's ordered, it would cost too much and be too much. So I got off the phone and visited with Lori a little bit about it. And we do have money in our budget that we could purchase this truck this year.
Okay.
Next year, we would purchase the box for it and we could still purchase a semi truck. So I said, after buying this truck out of our equipment budget for this year, we would still have money in our equipment budget that we won't use this year.
And Lynn, what is this going to be used for specifically this?
It'll be a plow truck.
Plow truck?
Yeah. So like I said, after the first of the year, we would, uh, get bids on a, a dump box for it and that would come out of next year's budget.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen. Second by Gable. So are we adding a truck or are we replacing another?
We'll add a truck after the, the first of the year, we're going to have a couple of trucks that we need to get rid of that we'd like to sell. We'll actually have three, we'll have two dump trucks and, and a semi truck that will, we'd like to replace. And we need to think of how we want to do that. If we want to, you know, the city has went to an online auction. We used to every couple of years do an auction with them and they've just went to totally online. And I don't know if that's something the county wants to do, but that'll be something for the next superintendent.
I'm not sure of this, but it seems like they generated a little bit more, uh, bidding because it's a nationwide type thing. So you'll get bidders from all across the country bidding on, on items instead of your local folks.
Right. Rob at the street department said that they've had stuff go to New Mexico.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just, if you want to do sealed bids or if you want to go to this online auction.
Yeah.
But we, we would have a few pieces of equipment that we could put on there next year.
Yeah.
But your request right now is that for one hundred and forty three thousand seven ninety two.
Arrests. Yeah.
And that's what my motion is for.
Yes. Any other questions for Lynn? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I need a desk.
Yeah. Number thirteen, action to approve purchase of a desk for the highway department.
Uh, so this is, would be a desk for Lori, our office administrator. This is going to come out of our road and bridge, equipment and repair budget. Um, her desk is showing some wear and tear. It's kind of a press board desk.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman.
So it's in this year's budget or next year's?
This year's budget.
And, and then that is, what's the price on that one?
Uh, what was it? Twenty four?
Two thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars.
And that includes the setup delivery.
Those are nice desks. That's what I have in our center. Um, and they're really solid.
Sure.
How long before they get that?
The desk?
How long?
The desk they currently have.
Oh, okay. So they're.
Yeah, this was one that they had.
Okay.
We don't have to wait six months then?
No.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
How's that skid steer working out?
Very good.
Good.
We're using it again today. So.
Good. You use it every day.
We, we do use it quite a bit, yes.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Let's, uh, we're, we're just going to keep going down. We're just going to shuffle the auditors report down a little later. Um, number fourteen, action to approve consultant agreement between Paddington County Community Service and Krista Adio Gorb maker. Morning Sarah.
Um, so this is just a request using the beyond idea grant funds to, um, do another consultant agreement with Krista. She, um, we connected through actually that healthy communities conference that we went to earlier this year and, um, she has a history in economic development or has some experience in economic development. So primarily she's going to help come up with a big business plan for the centralized location project, help finalize some of the Paddington Connect's collective impact pieces and do something designing in that area.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further questions for Sarah? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Uh, number fifteen, discussion possible action to approve glass doors for the Paddington County Extension Complex as a budgeted expense. Steve?
Good morning. Um, yes. Um, what I have is somebody, I got a couple quotes on somebody from Brian, Brian's Glass and Glass Products for the doors right by the extension office. These doors are quite old. Um, besides that, they're thin pane. They, they, um, frost up so bad, plus leak so bad. Um, one of the things is also they don't have is, don't have, uh, um, panic bars on it. You have to actually use the key and unlock them and unlock them. And when there's a function sometimes when it gets locked if somebody's in the back and it parked up in the front, this way the panic buttons. But, uh, I budgeted this for two thousand and twenty five. And one of the things I want to try to get done, I would like to have these installed by farm show time. So that's why I'm presenting it to you, to you now and stuff. So, um, the, the bid and so that from Brian's Glass is eleven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. And from Glass Products, eight thousand four hundred and fifty one forty. Um, my recommendation would be is to go with, uh, um, the, uh, Glass Products. One thing I did notice, they did put, uh, city and state sales tax. So that would have to be deemed off. So that price would have to be at seven thousand nine hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Motion by Gable.
I'll second it.
Second by Johnson. Any other questions on this?
So just for, just for clarification, Mr. Chair, the, this is for your twenty twenty five budget.
This is for twenty twenty five budget.
So when are you going to order these?
Uh, yes, I need to get these ordered so they can get them in to get them installed in.
They're okay with receiving payment in?
Yep.
January.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Just, just to follow up and another reason for replacing these doors is just the other day I got locked in the extension center. You can't get out. Uh, it doesn't have a panic bar and I was. So I had to go back, go down through the barn and go through the actual barn and find a, a door that I could get out. And, and I said, this would be a bad deal if we had a fire. I mean, I can't believe those doors, you know, were, were even in there.
Well, I mean, and there's probably not a lot of recommendations and so I, I, I mean, it's kind of surprising that the fire marshal never required to have these doors.
Been there a long time.
Yes.
Been there a long time. So I tried to get out. It didn't know that they didn't work.
And of course, to make your point and so bad on, on this, generally most time we have to pay after installation is, is completed on that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that they're okay, that they were going to honor that price after the first of the year. So. Guess we're halfway through December already.
Yeah. It's not speeding up anymore.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Number sixteen, action to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty six to remove the NSF checks outstanding as county assets.
Carol, good morning.
That's the second piece we found this week.
Till January.
We have a whole bag of wheels back there, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, um, what we're looking at is I've got a list of outstanding bad checks that I've, we've been carrying since. And I don't know if you guys got a copy of the schedule of the checks? Okay. Anyway, it's a list of checks, some of them going back as far as two thousand and eight. Um, the likelihood of us getting any money for those is pretty, um,
Slim.
Slim to none. Um, I am carrying over two checks that aren't on your list. Uh, they've been turned over to the state's attorney, but one of them sort of got lost in the shuffle. I think the young man moved out of Paddington County. I think that was part of the problem. And the other one, he's got a court date in January. So those two, we still have a possibility, but the ones that are on your list, you're not going to get any money for. This way we're not having to make adjusting entries. If you do get a payment, then you get a payment, but they're no longer really, they're like an uncollectible.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to remove these checks. Um, any other questions for Carol?
Mr. Chair, I'm the question guy today, apparently. Um, so the question I have is what, what are these checks for? Is it just money that's owed to the county that?
Right. I would, I would, um.
So what's?
They're like motor vehicle fees, basically.
Okay.
And anymore now there's a process in place. Everybody's paying with their credit card if they can't. If they can't write, cover their check, they're using a credit card. So this is almost disappeared. As far as, um, checks within the last year that have gone bad, I have two. You know, so that's, you know, it's not a problem anymore because forms of payment has changed.
Right, right. Those are checks that are just bad checks.
Just bad checks, right. I sent him a letter. The state's attorney sent him a letter. The state's attorney then proceeded to court and they're just in the wind.
Do those get, get sent to a credit bureau or anything for collections?
No.
I mean, I'm just curious. Yeah, okay. I don't know the process, so.
We only send like county liens to, uh, the credit bureau for like, though that wouldn't really be considered a lien.
Got you. Okay.
Dead in the water.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, number seventeen, approved copier purchase for the treasurer's office.
Right. The copier that we've had, that we've got, we've had for I don't know, ten, fifteen years, maybe? I don't know. I think my mother was still alive when I bought it. So that's been at least since two thousand and eight. So, um, this one is going to, uh, it's going to have color copy. It's going to have a scanner, which we're hoping to probably leverage when we get this new, um, motor vehicle software in February. One of the big pushes for them is they're going to want to go towards scanning documents. There is a grant program that's going to be in place that they are, I think what's going to happen is the state's going to buy the scanners and put them in place. The problem is we don't, and I, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to work it out because we don't really have space at our workstations for that because it's an additional piece of equipment. It's not a, it's not going to be a copier or a printer and a scanner. So we're going to have to work with that. I don't know if we'll leverage it by going behind or if we'll do them as projects, but that eventually will be in place. And I'm thinking that we can leverage this one if it becomes just where we decide to do stuff in batches, but we'll have to work that out. But anyway, it's time for a new one anyway, but this will help us with that problem as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, uh, to purchase the copier for the treasurer's office.
I have one question. The purchase price thirty nine eighty?
Correct.
And, and that also includes a.
Right into the one we've got.
Monthly service agreement?
The monthly service agreement is separate and apart.
Okay, but you're not asking for that.
That's, that's just part of everyday, everyday.
Right. That I run under my maintenance or repair. It's an ongoing expense like what I've got now. I've got, I've got that where I'm charging it now.
You will have the, the service agreement.
Mm hmm. Okay. Right.
Yeah, so.
It'll cover the, um, the toner cartridge, the drum, and then all service on the copier.
This is in the quote here, it says pricing above includes the machine accessories, initial supplies, delivery, installation and onsite training. And then the monthly service agreement is in addition. That's why you can budget that.
Yeah.
Separate from the copier price. So it's fifty one dollars a month. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
And we have done the research on this, just so the public knows leasing copiers versus purchasing them outright. The recommendation now is to purchase them.
That is correct.
Ultimately a cost savings for the county.
Yes. State auditors definitely said it's in our best interest to purchase and not lease.
Lucky.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Let's, uh.
Do my report first.
Go, go ahead and it's.
Okay, since I'm the only one this month, uh, finishing the levy calculations for taxes payable in two thousand and twenty five. And then those will be submitted to the Department of Revenue, which then they will approve those levies and, uh, we'll move forward then with all the other processes for the taxes and billing. Um, also monitoring the budgets for the year end balances so that everyone is in compliance. And if we would need any sort of formal budget hearing, that we get those publications done in, um, in time for a formal budget hearing. Otherwise commissioner contingency, uh, hopefully will cover those that we would do that. The last meeting of the month, we received a check in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred thirteen seventy four from clerk, which, um, at this point, our court appointed attorney budget, since we had that other automatic budget supplement from our money that we received earlier has helped us dramatically. So, uh, it looks like after our claims now in December, we should have twenty two thousand seven hundred forty fourteen left in that. So we may be able to turn some of that back into the general fund if, uh, so we did good. So that eleven thousand will just stay. And, and so we won't have to touch that and do an automatic budget supplement back in. So we're good on that. Um, so yes, that was, and but we received the good news with clerk that, um, there's going to be a special assessment because they have determined that their funds will probably run out. So they are assessing every county, an additional eight thousand three hundred fifty four dollars, which will be paid in January, though that will come out of there.
Three thousand is what we got.
Otherwise.
Mr. Chair, just so folks that are watching know what we're talking about. So clerk is a catastrophic legal expense reimbursement program. And that's when you have these court cases and counties are responsible to pay for court proceedings. And so it's, it's very expensive. So that happened and that was, that was for a, uh, a, uh, covering the claim of another county that was another big trial. I can't remember which county it was, but, um, it happened. So if you have, say, a county, a bunch of counties in a year that have these one hundred, five hundred thousand, really expensive trials, then that's, that's when they, they have to do an extra assessment. But in the long run, you know, we see the benefit of it in our, in our case.
It's an insurance policy.
Yes.
Basically, yeah.
Insurance policy for the county.
Yes. So we pay the first twenty five thousand, then after that, um, ten thousand of the balance. Uh, so your first clerk payment for the total year, it's quarterly amount, um, the amount was eight thousand eight hundred forty four is what we've already paid into that. So that other eight thousand will be an additional, but we can take that out of the two thousand and twenty five budget. So we'll be okay.
Is there ultimately going to be some, some clerk fees coming back on that homicide trial?
It depends on if they settled. I think we were watching a couple of our bigger ones and they settled. So we cannot, no, we can't send it in on those.
Got you.
So we were watching some of them, but I'm, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to say unfortunately, but they settled. So we're not able to. Yes. And that's all I have for my report. I guess I'm good with that.
Hey, let's move down to number eighteen then. Uh, action to approve auditor's account with treasurer not monthly register deeds fees.
Right. So you have those amounts in there. The last day of, um, November, all the money, cash that was on hand and any balances that are in the checking account, general fund, special revenues. On the, uh, auditor's account with the treasurer, you see down there on the custodial funds, the amount that goes to the schools, the townships and the city and towns. Those are allocated out on a monthly basis. So.
Move to approve.
Oh, yeah. And then the register. Oh, yeah, and then the registered deeds fees is thirty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-seven sixty. Okay. That was Gable?
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. To approve the auditor's account with the treasurer and registered deeds fees. Any other questions, Brenda? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number nineteen, uh, action to approve revised uh, Tegra consulting agreement jail project.
Commissioner. I can open this one. So basically since the bond passed, Tegra has been our, what we call an owner's rep or basically a project consultant for the construction of the jail. Um, so walking us through the process and then helping us to save money. So um, other jurisdictions, particularly the city and some other counties have been very happy with Tegra's work, so they get, they end up saving. Um, even though you pay them obviously for their services, you you do end up saving overall and typically. Um, so this is the amount, we have no, no surprises on the amount, but when basically one point five percent of the total budget cost. Which is anticipated to be, as we've talked about, the thirty-seven, two hundred and forty thousand, so that that would be five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then it goes through the other pages of the document, just kind of go through some of the processes and specifics on the services. That hasn't changed much. Um, the state's attorney helped us to tighten up a few spots of the language, um, just to make sure that we're covered, so. So she's had a chance to look at it and uh, and is good with it. Um, the other um, thing I would add is. That um, so the project is meant to take um. Let's see, twenty-seven months altogether, so that's kind of the overall anticipation. So there's built-in incentives, it's the price is fixed, there's built-in incentive for them to either finish on time or even early. So, so you know, the longer the project goes over that, you know, over the anticipated time, then you know, the less, the less problematic it is for them. So they keep it in place the whole, um, it's kind of a built-in incentive for them to, to, you know, to get it done even under. Uh, underscared or yeah, underscheduled, so. Time making motion to approve this, this uh.
So this is the estimated price that you mentioned, thirty-seven, two forty.
Yep.
But what about cost overruns? There'd be additional charges for cost overrun again?
That, no, not in this, not in this agreement, so.
Generally, you have up to ten percent, twelve percent.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so your tangency is built into that, into that amount. Okay, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen, uh, to um, accept this revised Tegra consulting agreement. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just make, just make one point, so we do have other contracts with the, other agreements with the uh, architect and the um, construction manager. Um, like the, so there might be some, some minor amendments for those, but we wrote those um, to anticipation. And so the bottom, you know, in a different basis, so the bottom of the pass, so that's it. So um, there might be some amendments, but I'm not sure that we actually need those, but just, just so you're aware, that's, that's what they're for.
Any other? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No abatements.
Number twenty-one, action to approve claims.
You have that claims list in your packet. Uh, I, I didn't really highlight too much out of the ordinary, other than our S D M L work, workers comp. Um, needed to be taken care of this month for our next year's coverage. If there's anything anyone else notices, um, just let me know. Otherwise, the total amount. Um, of the claims was one million four hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Of that, though, the state pass-through amount is four hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Which leaves the total amount for the county claims at nine hundred thirty thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Make a question to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any other questions on any of the claims?
I have no questions, but I have a comment, you know. It does, our benefit of meetings has come out in the paper occasionally, pretty much maybe every week, but a few weeks late, whatever. But people read them, because I was approached by some, one of our constituents out there about that expensive vehicle that we bought for the county. The one that we paid storage on.
Oh.
Month after month after month. And so people read these things and they're watching us.
There was a news story that was done on that, that's part of the.
And I, and that's that, and I explained what it was all about, and they said, that's ridiculous. And I said, we agree.
Yeah, there's no way to get it out without paying that bill. But we tried.
Tate's attorney did.
Yeah.
But uh, they do, people are re, they do actually read that stuff.
That's good.
Poodles for our, our press over here taking notes.
Wake him up.
Hey, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No automatic budget supplements. We do have one personnel change. For Morgan Cunningham, effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty-four administrative support in the auditor's office. Uh, we'll go from current step um. G twenty, step two, to G twenty-five, step one. The new rate of pay is twenty-one forty-nine um, an hour. And this is due to changing position and duties within the office.
Move to approve.
That good?
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson. Any further question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No travel requests.
No travel requests. Public notices of possible quorum. December nineteenth is uh, Christmas, uh, bad luck. Yeah. Think I noted that for next week, for sure.
Put it on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so people know. It's night, it is the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Hey, if there's none other, let's uh, uh, move down to number twenty-six, old business. Is there any old business?
Yeah, I mentioned last week that we, uh, we, we had a, another, we had a design team Tuesday after, after last week's meeting. And that was just kind of continuing on with um, the uh, uh, decision, the architect, construction manager. Mostly with Tegra and then uh, the, the sheriff and the chief corrections officer. Just going through some of the spaces, just kind of stepping through and just trying to tweak a lot of the, the square footages of the specific rooms. So just kind of more of the same, but more refinement. Um, so it's kind of a back and forth between the architect and, and us, the user, through the sheriff primarily. So um, all the while trying to keep that square footage to where we anticipate it to be. So, and that's kind of the, you know, the major thing that, that we use to estimate the cost with the uh, construction manager's recommendation. So um, I can, what, um, I'm planning to post that on our website, you know, under the C C J A C. Part of our webpage area, so um, I'll try to do that post in the next couple of days. And then if people are curious about what, you know, the kinds of things we talk about, you can take a look there. Um, but it's, you'll see some rough sketches and things like that about what, what, what we're doing.
And thanks, Commissioner Gable. Um, is there any uh, new business? Hey, number twenty-eight is now the time for public comment. Yeah, someone would like to make public comment? Not seeing any or hearing any? Is there any commissioner comments?
Mister Chair, I uh, through the meetings over, I'm headed for, to peer for the South Florida Retirement Meeting. Uh, we will be establishing the COLA for July twenty twenty-five, would be for next year's. Um, the proposed is one point seven percent, to give you an idea where we're at. The fund is still a hundred percent funded, but at that uh, one point seven, I think it's one point seven one. Uh, percent increase or COLA, that would still keep us a hundred percent um, funded. But uh, there's some other items on the agenda, but uh, it's gonna be like the long data.
It's better than no COLA.
Better than a minus.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, any other commissioner comments? Thanks for doing that, Myron.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, number twenty-nine, we do have a need for executive session on uh, I'd say personnel.
Move to, move to, uh, executive session.
I'll move to move also.
Move to move somewhere.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go into executive.
Mister Chair, we do anticipate action following.
Oh, yes, yes.
So if you wanna hang out, JT?
No?
No?
You don't think?
Oh, it'll be on next week's agenda, okay.
Okay.
All right, discard.